Is this hand not working? It isn't. There it goes. All right. Well, good evening. I would like to call this session of the Temecula City Council to order. And we'd like to thank Michaela O'Sullivan. Stand up, Michaela, so we can see you, for that beautiful prelude.[18.14][18.14][applause] You add so much to the waiting time before the council meeting. So, thank you. This evening, we will have Pastor Mel Kratsley of Grace Fellowship Church, who's going to offer us the invocation. And Councilmember Roberts, would you please do the flag salute for us?
I will.
So, full stand.
Before I start, I would just like to acknowledge a longtime resident of Temecula. His name is Dale Cole. Now, many of you might not know Dale, but you've probably seen him one time or another if you've been downtown Temecula the last 20 or 30 years. Dale is 88-years-old, had polio when he was one-year-old, and has been pretty much a paraplegic. And he drives around in a scooter all over Temecula.
Oh, yeah.
With a flag.
And a dog.
With a little banner that says "Vote or Get Out of the USA", and proudly with his dog, little dog on the front, called Deletta Mae. Well, Dale, just this week, was diagnosed with terminal cancer, liver cancer. And he probably does not have very much longer to live. But he is a proud American, and he is a proud citizen of Temecula. So, as we pray, I want to say a special prayer for Brother Dale. Let's pray. Lord, I just want to thank you that you are a God of prayer, a God who actually loves to listen to us pray, and a God who has promised to answer our prayer requests. And for that reason, we don't come to you lightly. We come to you in the power of Jesus Christ, knowing that you're going to answer our prayers according to your perfect will. Lord, you've told us that if we lack wisdom, we're supposed to ask you, so we want to ask you for wisdom. You've told us if we need guidance, Lord, if we trust in you with all our heart, you've promised to direct our paths and make them straight. And you've promised us, and you want us to be good leaders. And as a Marine for 28 years, I know how good, good leadership can be. And so, I pray, Lord, that you would give this council members and the people here a tremendous amount of wisdom and direction. And I pray that anything that's resolved tonight, any decisions that were made, will be the same decisions that you would make if you were right here. We know that government is the second-oldest institution ordained by you, next to only marriage. So, we do not take tonight lightly. We pray that everything we do would be honoring and glorifying and the right thing to do. And we also pray for Brother Dale. And I pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Put your hand on your heart. And join me in the flag salute to our nation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor and Mr. Roberts. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comacherro?
Here.
Nigar?
Good evening, everybody.
Roberts?
Here.
Washington?
I'm here.
Mayor Edwards?
I'm here, too. Thank you. We can move on to public comments. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we have two.
Okay. So, I will read this. A total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. So, could we have our first speaker, please?
Gillian Larson.
I'm back.
Back.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards, City Council, and everybody else that runs such an awesome town. I have laryngitis. I just talk too much, so...[302.02][302.02][laughter] Yeah, right. I want to welcome you all back to Reality Rally. It's coming again in April 11th, 12th, and 13th. We would love to have a city council team on in the game, because Marietta is on board. They said they're going to win. Like Elsinore says, they are on board, and they're going to win, because they've won two years in a row, and they're not letting it go. We're going to Escondido, Riverside, Manife, and all anybody else that's close. We're having everybody come and play. So, I want you to know, and I've brought one for each of you, and I don't know if I could put this up for people to see.
Sure, you can.
I'm not sure how. Can you tell us the right way up?
Yes. Well, I'll tell you in a second.
All right. So, I just want to share with you that Reality Rally is a three-day weekend of Fund for Funds. We raise money for Michelle's Place that provides services for men and women, underinsured or uninsured, for breast cancer services. And through Reality Rally, we have put Temecula on the map. There are our stats from 2013. We're actually viewed in 96 countries. We're spoken about in 48 languages. We bring all kinds of people from all over the country. This year, I have not had to go up to Hollywood to talk to everybody in every bar, because, believe me, that isn't me anyway, because they are promoting us. We had 150 reality stars apply to come this year. They have to raise a minimum of $400 to attend, and they've done it willingly. We've had people that have raised over $1,000 in one or two days. They are just on board. They love our town. They've heard so much about Temecula and what Reality Rally does, that they want to be part of it. We're represented by 42 different TV shows, so it's really, truly amazing. So, I would love Temecula to have their city council team in that game on Saturday afternoon the 12th. We have a few people that have experienced that, and it's a lot of fun. We have 12 challenge checkpoints that are put on by all of our organizations in Old Town that make a wonderful, wonderful challenge. We encourage all our Temecula residents to come out and watch that city council, take on that city council challenge. We have a party at Wilson Creek on Friday, the game and everything that goes on on Saturday, a party at South Coast Winery, and on Sunday, we have the chefs' celebrity showcase for the volunteer breakfast at Palomesa Golf Resort. We have 19 chefs coming from nine different cooking shows, and they are going to be putting on a challenge of cooking, just like the networks. So, we want everybody in Temecula to please come down, help us raise funds for Michelle's Place, Fund for Funds, cheer on the Temecula team, and just have a really, really good time. So, those stats are pretty impressive, and we're bringing in money, as I told Mr. Washington the first time I met him, we will bring in money from the outside, and we did 16 countries and every one of the 50 states last year. So, thank you so much. This is Reality Rally, April 11th, 12th, 13th, realityrally.com. And I talked slower this time, right?[484.84][484.84][laughter] So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Gillian. Could we have next speaker, please?
Patrice Linds.
Hi.
Ms. Linds, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you? At the January 28th meeting, this council voted on Item 15, including 15.2 B and C. Usually, there are staff reports and supporting materials online, but no online supporting materials were available on B and C, nothing for the public to view. Did you review it? Two-thirds of the council vote dealt with agreements and bonds. It seems this council was so concerned with the conflicted council problem, you failed to review what you were deciding. Furthermore, it is evident that the Temecula City Council is full of members that have a financial interest with Dan Stevenson and RandCon. When a quorum of the city council cannot vote on an agenda item due to a conflict of interest with RandCon, it is time for the council to step down. The scenario was evidenced at the last meeting when a fishbowl was brought out, and names of those with conflicts were placed in the bowl. Jeff Comacherro, president and CEO of RandCon's, was drawn, and he abstained. The remaining two council members voted yes, even though Ron Roberts' son works for RandCon. Therefore, Ron Roberts should have recused himself. This entire vote, in my opinion, was a Government Code 1090 ethics violation and should be invalidated and investigated. Code 1090 states any contract made in violation of it, it is void and cannot be enforced. An official who commits a violation of Section 1090 is subject to felony prosecution and administrative sanctions. There should be an investigation into this vote.
Mr. City Attorney, might you just address that very quickly, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Prior to that action taking place, we did request a formal advice letter from the Fair Political Practices Commission. They advised us that the method that we used, the random selection, was appropriate, and that with that, the matter could go forward. With respect to Mr. Roberts, the interests that one has in their adult children doesn't count as a conflict of interest. And so far as I know, his son does not even work for RandCon, so it's not an issue at all. But I think the important part is that we did request the formal advice letter from the FPPC, and they advised us that the methodology we used to address that was appropriate. I think the other thing that's important is, this was a final tract map, meaning that it was pretty much a ministerial action. You didn't change the tract, you didn't change the conditions of approval, so it was pretty much of just a ministerial action.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, did you want to come?
Yeah, just to comment on that, I thank you, Peter, for bringing that up, but just also that not only does my son not work for RandCon, but he's 52-years-old, and I think he's out on his own right now.[706.42][706.42][laughter] I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Incidentally, too, the FPPC advice letter was attached to the agenda item.
And the FPPC being the government body that has jurisdiction over all...
Over both the Political Reform Act and Government Code 1090.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have any council members that would like to report?
I have one.
Okay.
One quick thing.
Mr. Roberts?
For public works. I've been noticing that the traffic signal lights on Inez, south of Rancho, California, are defective. There's three in four lights out in a row, and it's a very dark area. Can we have staff go out and maybe check and see which lights are out and get those replaced? Because that's a dangerous place to not have the streetlights on. I think about three years ago, I asked some other places to get that done also. So, maybe we can kind of just have a couple staff members go out and just, let's check the main thoroughfares that are dark and get those things going again. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I have one comment. About a week ago, a KTLA Channel 5 reporter showed up in Old Town. Wayne's laughing in the back of the room. He knows what I'm going to talk about. Showed up in Old Town and ended up here at City Hall. We happen to have been having a business event in the conference center across the way. And he, they, the reporter and the cameraman came into the conference center, and I was there. They found me and said, "Could you step outside? We'd like to interview you." And I said, "Sure." So, he said, "We want to talk to you about the Bull Run." And I said, "The what?" He said, "The Bull Run." I said, "Well, I've never been to Spain, but I understand it's a very popular event." He said, "No, the Temecula Bull Run." And I said, "I beg your pardon." So, I said, "You're going to have to tell me about it, because I don't know anything about it." And no one at City Hall knew anything about it, because, as it turns out, there isn't one. There was an article in a newspaper, and it received quite a bit of, let's just say, interest from different segments of the society. So, we started getting emails protesting Temecula's involvement in hosting a Bull Run. So, staff sprang into action. We did a couple of press releases saying that there is no Bull Run in Temecula, and for the next couple of days, we've received many, many emails from all over the country, from people who were incensed that we would have such an event. So, just to make sure we've covered all of our bases and are perfectly clear, there is no Bull Run in Temecula. Such an event was proposed for an arena that's several miles outside the city limits. City didn't know anything about it. The county has jurisdiction over it, and I think has since ruled that that particular event does not fall within the permitted use of that facility. So, if you have any doubts about Temecula having a Bull Run, we are not having one. Didn't know anything about it. We're not sponsoring it. We're not hosting it. And that's all I have to say. And if you have questions, you can email the County Board of Supervisors, because they're the ones that have jurisdiction over that particular event. So, all right, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Number two, action minutes. Number three, list of demands. Number four, city treasurer's report as of December 30th, 2013. Number, got to skip number five. Yeah, got it. Number five, approval of the possession and use agreement for a portion of the assessor's parcel, number 921-480-032, to construct the Overland Drive Extension, Project PW00-26. Number six, professional services agreement for the design of the flood control channel reconstruction and repair project, PW11-10.
Move approval consent.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And consent passes, 5-0. And I will recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meeting of the Temecula Community Services District, the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, and the Temecula Housing Authority, and Temecula Public Financing Authority. You've got a lot to do tonight.
Those are not all mine. But anyway, I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here tonight, so we'll dispense with the roll again. Do we have any public comment under this portion?
Yes, we have one under Item 8.
That's on the consent calendar. Do we have any in the...
Oh, under nothing, under public comment.
Okay, so, Item 8, we have a speaker. Okay, well, let me read the items that we have on the consent calendar. Item 7 is approval of the action minutes of January 28th, and Item 8 is sponsorship agreement with the American Heart Association, Inc., for a Women's Heart Health Awareness Event at the request of Mayor Edwards. So, we have a speaker on that. What I'd like to do is bifurcate the items then, and let's just take Item 7 first.
Move Item 7.
Second.
A motion and a second. Let's take a voice vote on that. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that motion carries. Then, on Item 8, the sponsorship with the American Heart, if we have a speaker, then we need to pull that item, and if we need to pull it, then I need to recuse myself and turn the meeting over to Mayor Edwards. I recuse myself, because a participant in that event on the 20th of this month is the Temecula Valley Hospital, and I sit on the governing board of that hospital. So, it's all yours.
All right. Did you read the disclaimer? I was taking a short nap there. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. So, this is Item Number 8, sponsorship agreement with the American Heart Association, Inc., for the Women's Heart Health Awareness Event at the request of yours truly. And we have a speaker. Would you call that speaker, please?
Margaret, I believe it's Slike.
Welcome. Gillian and I wore red for women today.
Thank you very much. February is National Heart Month, and so, I appreciate you inviting me here and bringing this topic up at such a good time. Heart disease is the number-one killer of both men and women, and I have some statistics up on the screen right now. Every 34 seconds, someone has a heart attack, and every 40 seconds, somebody has a stroke. This is our fourth year having the Heart Walk here in Temecula, and also the fourth year that we've been raising awareness in the valley by doing events, such as the one that we're asking sponsorship for on the 20th, as well as the event after the Heart Walk. The money raised for the event that we have, just so you know kind of where the American Heart Association's dollars go, are going to research grants, three of which are in the Inland Empire, two of which are at UCR. And also, we're out in the community helping raise awareness through health and wellness expos and other items like that. So, we just appreciate your consideration. And on behalf of my little eight-year-old, who had open-heart surgery when he was three, I just thank you.
Well, thank you. And I would encourage everyone to come out and participate with us and participate in the walk. It is a critical issue for women, and probably one of the leading killers of women in the United States. Women have a tendency to ignore their symptoms, which happen to be different than men's symptoms, correct?
Yes, it is. And we get busy, and we take care of everybody else, I think, but us sometimes.
Yes, that's true. I know there was someone who was having chest pain, and she waited several hours to call the paramedics, and when she did, they said, "We'll be there in three minutes." And she said, "Well, could you give me a little more time? I need to vacuum."[1254.08][1254.08][laughter] So, you know, we would encourage people not to do that, but thank you very, very much, and we'll be there to participate.
Thank you.
All right. So, we will take, no more speakers, we will go ahead and take Item Number 8.
Can we take a voice vote on that?
Yes, we may.
Move approval.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, that is four, and one is out of the room abstaining. Here comes President Edward, President Edwards, President Comacherro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for filling in. We'll now go to the Director of Community Services. Kevin, you have a report tonight?
No reports tonight, Mr. President.
Wow, what did we do? Aaron, general manager's report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any directors' reports? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of February 25th.
Move adjournment.
Motion and a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to one, we are adjourned.[1322.21][1322.21][laughter]
Stop it. All right, then I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we're going to move into public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. This is Item Number 9, Municipal Code Amendment, Long Rage Planning Project, LR13-0007. And could I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city councils. The project before you is consideration of an ordinance that would amend several sections of the municipal code, more specifically, Section 6, 8, 16, and 17 of the municipal code. Madam Mayor and members of the councils, these changes are individually considered to be minor policy changes of the code. So, at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Dale West to help us review this project with the council.
Hi, Dale.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. Good evening, council. Okay, as Mr. Villa indicated, there are several sections of the code that are being amended this evening. We've got 17 sections, so I will be brief as I can in my staff report. Municipal code was originally adopted in 1990 by city council. Since its adoption, there are periodic amendments to the code to provide clarification and provide minor policy changes. Staff is proposing amendments to Title 6, Title 8, Title 16, and Title 17 of the municipal code. Beginning with the first item, definition of cattery. This amendment revises the definition by changing the keeping of 10 or more cats to the keeping of five or more cats. This proposed change establishes consistency between Sections, or Titles 6 and Titles 17 of the code, which currently allows the keeping of four cats, for adult cats, as a necessary use to residential zoning districts. The definition of smoking is also being changed by adding the definition of an electronic cigarette and other similar type of devices containing nicotine. The extension of time for tentative maps. This proposal is streamlining the process for approving an extension of time for tentative map currently. An extension of time, or an application for an extension time has to be submitted 60 days prior to the map expiring. This proposal allows for an application to be submitted right up to the time that it expires. It also states that the subdivider that's proposing the extension, if no changes are being made, it can be approved by the planning director. If changes are being proposed, then it must be approved by the original approving body. The formula for a dedication of parkland, this is just a typographical correction, the product of the formula had transposed numbers in it. We're not changing anything on that, just correcting the formula. Procedures for zoning appeals. This just establishes consistency within Titles 17. It reiterates that the city manager and the council, or a member of council, may file an appeal of a planning decision when that action is of sufficient importance to the city and should be reviewed by the entire city council. Findings for conditional use permit. This just clarifies that the standard findings, that in addition to the planning commission and the city council on appeal, the planning director is also an approval authority for certain conditional use permits. It does not change the current approval authority of the planning commission or the planning director for the conditional use permits. Density ranges for residential zoning districts. This just establishes consistency between the general plan and our development code for the zoning districts. There is no proposed change that affects the densities. It's just to provide consistency. We noticed that there was a couple zoning districts that weren't consistent with the general plan. Okay, agricultural uses in residential zoning districts. This proposed amendment does not affect the current regulations for the keeping of large and small livestock animals, for example, horses and/or sheep, and the chickens of, and chickens within the rural residential, very low-density residential and low-density residential zoning districts. What it does is, it specifies that the keeping of large and small livestock animals are not allowed in the low-medium residential zoning district. And it also increases the keeping of chickens from two to four in the low-medium residential zoning district. This item was heard by the planning commission, in which we were proposing to clarify this and what, and go with what was currently allowed in the code as a limiting, the keeping of chickens to two out of residential zoning district. We heard comments from the public requesting that the council consider to increase that to four. We've done research on that and find that urban farming advocacy groups that do agree with that, as they are a flock animal, so our proposal is to increase that to four. It does not change the separation distance requirement of 70 feet for the keeping of animals that are adjacent to residences, daycare centers, educational institution, hospitals, or churches. And it does not allow for the keeping of roosters. Setbacks and minor exceptions for swimming pool and spas. This just clarifies that the setback for a swimming pool or spa is to the water's edge. It also includes the setback for a water slide and for rock features. And it also clarifies that a minor exception will not be granted if the setback is adjacent to a residential property. Use regulations for commercial office zoning districts. The amendment establishes consistency between two sections of the code by clarifying that a conditional use permit is required for kennels within the business and light industrial zoning districts. For office uses in commercial and industrial districts, this amendment clarifies that financial office uses are allowed within the light industrial zoning district. Currently, office, financial office uses are allowed, among a variety of other, office uses in all other commercial zoning districts, where financial is not allowed in the light industrial district, and this would allow it. this would allow it. Delicatessens. Currently, the delicatessens are allowed in all commercial zoning districts with the exception of neighborhood commercial. And this amendment would allow them in all zoning districts, including neighborhood commercial. Affordable housing. This amendment establishes consistency between the Temecula municipal code and California government code by indicating that affordable housing projects are permitted use in the professional office zoning district and that they are not required to obtain a conditional use permit. For Temecula Creek Village Plan Development Overlay, or PDO-4, currently allows restaurants with the sale of beer and wine and distilled spirits and restaurants with entertainment with a conditional use permit in one of the two commercial zoning districts in that PDO. This amendment would allow that use in both commercial zoning districts. Bicycle parking requirements. This is just making the, our bicycle parking requirements consistent with California Green Building Code. The amendment changes the current requirement for bicycle parking for restaurants from one bicycle parking space for every forty vehicle parking spaces to one per twenty. And it also removes the previously allowed exemptions for bicycle parking. Compact car parking. This is just clarifying that compact car parking spaces are not allowed unless they've been previously entitled. And then finally, on permanent signs, this amendment clarifies that the maximum square footage of a, of a sign for commercial use is based on, this is for a wall sign, is based on the linear footage of a business frontage for the tenant and not based on the linear footage of the building. The proposed amendment does not increase or decrease what is currently allowed for a sign area. It's just providing This item is exempt from CEQA pursuant to section 15061B3, a general rule of CEQA that allows a jurisdiction to determine that if there are no possibility for an activity in question to have a significant effect on the environment, that jurisdiction can determine that the project is exempt from CEQA. As I mentioned earlier, the item was heard by planning commission on November 6th. They did recommend through resolution 13-42 to approve the ordinance by city council. And so, this recommendation before you is to adopt ordinance as presented for titles VI, Title VIII, XVI, and XVII of the Temecula municipal code. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Dale. It's a lot of housekeeping, but fairly, fairly routine. Are there any questions? Mr. Nagar.
Thank you. Couple of questions. First, on the pool setback. You made reference that if the, there won't be any minor exceptions granted if it's adjacent a residence. So, if it's, what is the, the pool setback requirement?
The pool setback requirement is five feet from the water's edge.
To the property line?
To the property line, that's correct.
Okay, so, so, in the case of it being four feet, eleven inches, you guys would say no. Couldn't happen.
Correct. If it was, if the adjacent property is residential, if the adjacent property is open space, we could allow then a minor exception.
Okay. Has staff considered that that may be real restrictive? In other words, rather than just an outright, "No, it can't be done," maybe it needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis? And that's, did that come into, into play? Why the, why the strict, "We won't look at it, period?"
It's come up in the past and, and when we work with building and safety on this, we understand this is a safety issue. And so, it's been what we've done in practice.
Okay.
And so, now, we're just putting it in code.
And I'll cover that a little bit more in, in my comments. We'll discuss it with my colleagues. Regarding, I think it was item 14, Temecula Creek Village Overlay, where we're adding the use of, of alcohol to a portion of that overlay. It, it seems to me that that's a fundamental land use change, that I think I'd like to know a little bit more about Temecula Creek Village and what exactly are the uses there and where we're exactly allowing alcohol.
Sure.
Which I'm not necessarily opposed to. I'm just saying we're a little short on information making a fundamental land use change. And then, I'm a little curious, is it indeed such a change exempt from CEQA?
The, I've got a map if that might help to show on that question.
Well, I'd like, I think I'd need a little bit more in, in depth. But, I'm saying, if we're adding alcohol use to a certain area and we find that it's exempt from CEQA, typically when we allow alcohol use in an area, we go through a whole, well, a whole, well, it's, it's not CEQA exempt. We certainly, it may be a negative declaration, but it's certainly not CEQA exempt. But, here, you've exempted it. And I'm a little curious how we, how we find that adding alcohol to a whole area does not need any sort of CEQA review.
Yeah. The, it would require conditional use permit, which would be subject by CEQA and that would go through a review on a project-by-project basis. And perhaps the city attorney can help add to that.
And I'll, and I'll clarify that to, to the city attorney. Obviously, when we approved it, we said alcohol is good here, but not here. And now, we're fundamentally changing that. I think I'd like to review why, why, and I think I was on the council at the time, maybe Robertson, Comachero were here at the same time, too, circa 2001, when we approved that. We did something. But, anyway, if you want to speak to it, it's, it's a question at this point. I'll say discussion for later.
It's, it's, it's up to the city council whether you think it's an appropriate change in the code or not.
Okay. As far as CEQA and it being a, a fundamental land use change, needing a little bit more review than a code update?
Well, if you think it's a fundamental land use change, then you would, you, you could request that there be further CEQA review. That's up to you.
Fair enough. The other issue, as it relates to compact cars and we're removing compact car parking spaces, what's the thinking behind that?
Yeah. There are some developments that were approved with compact car spaces many years ago. If they come in and resurface their parking lot and restripe it, we would not make them adhere to the new standards that have since been adopted by city council to not allow them. So, we're saying that if they were previously entitled, we would allow them to continue to have those compact parking spaces.
So, are we saying that for new development, we're starting to phase out compact car spaces?
They've already been phased out. We don't allow them for new development.
We're not allowing them. So, the-
And that has not changed.
So, so, your purpose here is to clarify that under a restriping, that there's, it's grandfathered in?
Correct.
That's the only cleanup item regarding compact car spaces?
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you, Dale. That's all the questions I have for now.
Councilmember Comachero is in the queue. You going in?
Yeah, back to the same issue of alcohol and plan development overlay. I'm, I'm curious as to why we would bring that forward in the municipal code. I mean, normally, wouldn't that be considered as a separate item? As Councilwoman Nagar said, be a, a land use change. Everything else that I know of in the municipal code, and I, I don't know particularly if it's every one of them, but certainly these that you're bringing forward are general in nature. This particular one applies to a specific property. Why is that appropriate?
In the, in PDO-4, there's both residential and, and retail commercial. There are two distinct areas for retail commercial. They both allow a variety of retail and service commercial in both of those areas. The, the, what's called the, the village, retail village, allows for the restaurants with alcohol sales, whereas the other retail district would allow for restaurants with the sale of beer and wine, but it doesn't allow for the, the hard liquor and/or live entertainment with a conditional use permit.
You know, I, I understand that, but I think it still doesn't explain why we're, we're tackling a specific land use for a specific property here in the municipal code when we would normally expect an application to come forward and, and we would rule on that application against whatever we had in the code. But, it would be on a case-by-case basis. Here, rather than a general statement that says all PDOs in that same condition could have alcohol, we're saying this particular property can have it and we're changing the municipal code to reflect that. I'm just not sure that's appropriate. And was that ever discussed?
The discussion was, the, the staff didn't feel that, that there was any justification as to why it couldn't be allowed, as it's allowed in, in another part of the PDO.
Okay. I still, I have a problem with that. But, okay.
Mr. Washington?
I, I guess in the staff report, I kind of read that, well, at least the CEQA exemption differently from the PDO portion. I guess I was reading it as the change-
That's what I did.
-was exempt, but not necessarily a particular use which would fall under a CUP, which then would expose it to CEQA review. Is that what you just said?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so, it's not the use that you're saying is exempt, but our changes to our, our code-
Correct.
-that's exempt. So, I think we still get where you want to go.
Yes.
At least, that was the way I understood it. So, that's kind of a question. The rest of what I wanted to bring up actually is not questions. I'll wait till the discussion in relationship to the pool setback and, and the rest of the discussion regarding the PDO.
Okay. Any follow-up questions pursuant to that discussion? No? All right. And do we have any comments? I'm going to open the public hearing.
There are no comments under, under item nine.
All right. So, does anyone wish to comment under item nine, having heard the staff report? No? Going once? Going twice? Ms. Lyons, you have to come up because we can't hear you. And you'll, would you, you'll fill out a request to speak when you're finished?
Hi, Tyler. Hi. Um, on, is Meadowview consi-, sorry, is Meadowview considered very low density?
Density?
Yeah.
Let, let us ask, Mr. Dale.
Yes, it is. It's very low-density residential.
And could you repeat that, the code you were going to change where you weren't going to allow horses or very large animals?
Oh, no, that's, may I respond to that?
Yeah, we'll get some clarification. Okay.
Yes, the, the proposed amendment does not change the keeping of large or small livestock animals for the rural residential, very low-density residential or low-density residential zoning district. So, there is no change to that zoning district.
Okay. So, I have one more question. I'm sorry.
Okay. This, this is a little unorthodox, so if you could address the council, please, and then I'll let you ask one more question.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I was just wondering, how many horses would be allowed? Two or three?
Um, I, you know, I don't know what the current limit is.
Depends on how many acres.
Yes, it's, it's based on the amount of property, so.
Okay. Do I need to fill out a form now?
Yes, please do. All right. Any other comments on item number nine? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain council discussion. Mr. Nagar, you're in the queue.
Well, certainly, anytime you embark on cleaning up the code, it's, it's a good thing and it should be done regularly. And part and parcel, I, I think staffs did a good job in going through it and cleaning up some things. I brought up the pool setback issue. You know, we're doing a lot of exploration with, with homes that are on smaller lots. They're not necessarily on 2,000 or 3,000 square foot lots, but sometimes they're on fours or 4,500s. The absolute, the, the, the finality of, if you don't make the five-foot setback, don't even come in and ask for a minor exemption, seems just a little restrictive to me. I understand the need for the setbacks, but there's all kinds of conditions. The next-door neighboring property may, may be a little lower than you, may be a little higher than you. It may be part of their backyard. There's all kinds of conditions. I just wouldn't want to preclude somebody from being able to put in their pool because they, they may not meet the criteria. So, I don't know what the, I'm not, the code says it's five feet, but probably should leave it to the staff's discretion and maybe even the neighboring property owner's approval as to whether or not they mind it being four and a half. I don't think we need to codify a law and just eliminate everybody in that, who, who may not meet that setback. The other one regarding Temecula Creek Village, I'm extremely puzzled how a land use decision makes it into a municipal code cleanup. And that, why I understand that you almost have two sets of code, as Mr. Washington pointed out. You have a municipal code that addresses the ability to have, make these kind of changes. It tends to be extremely specific for Temecula Creek villages. And if it came in as a project review proper, it would have an initial study done and it would, we, it would fall under CEQA and we would have determination whether or not there were any impacts with the change. There may not be, there may be, but I think it needs that level of review and how this made its way into a, to a property-specific, project-specific, made it way into a, made its way into a, a city-wide municipal code ordinance cleanup is a little puzzling. So, I'd ask that that be taken out. And if the applicant wants us to look at it, certainly bring it forward. Not against considering it, but I think we need to look at it. Take public testimony on it, see what's going on. Yeah?
Councilmember Nagar, am I missing something? Or could an applicant not just shrink the size of their pool to fit within the constraints of the setback?
Maybe not.
Maybe not always?
Maybe not, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Washington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'll concede on the point on the PDO. I, I'm happy to, you know, leave it as is and process it with the application. In regards to the pool setback issues, you know, I, I don't want any grayness about it. I don't want any staff discretion moving it inches. Five feet's five feet. In my estimation, that's even too close. And, and if someone's putting a pool in and they can't find a few inches to relocate it to accommodate that setback, I, I don't want staff making that sort of gray call on it. Right now, in the state of California, and actually, all across the nation, the number-one killer of accidental deaths of children under five is drownings.
What has to do with this? What does it have to do with, with a setback?
It has to do with safety, is what it has to do with. And, quite honestly, five feet from the property line and a child getting into an area where there's a pool, I, I'm just, you know, I wouldn't support giving staff that discretion. If, if I had my way, I'd move it even further away from the property line, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Nagar.
Not necessarily, every pool by, by code has to be fenced in. So, whether it's five feet away from the property line or whether it's one inch from the property line, it's got to be totally fenced in, self-closing gate, everything that goes along with that. I, 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 I don't know what that has to do with drowning. My general point of view is when an applicant or a residence comes into city hall, I generally want to help them get what they need approved and have a pathway for them to get it approved. To absolutely say there is no pathway to getting it approved seems a little counterproductive. I would say that we do variances all the time. In fact, that's by definition, that's what a variance is for. To say that if you're at four feet, ten inches, "Sorry, buddy, you're just out of luck because you missed it by two inches," seems extremely restrictive. I, I don't know why we would want to be that restrictive. There's no point in it.
But where do you draw the line?
That's why you leave it to reasonable discretion. Well, that, well, wait a minute. That's why we have variances. And staff makes decisions on variances all the time. So, we don't have an ordinance that says how much of a variance we'll consider. There's a whole set of criteria that goes into considering a variance. So, you leave it to discretion because reasonable people can figure that out. But, that's just me.
Councilmember Comachero.
Thank you. And I, I was there before, Ron, so I know you're in there.
Yeah, he was there before you.
No, he wasn't.
Yes, he was.
I, Ms. Nagar, I have to disagree with you. I, I think when you're talking about children's safety, there is no margin of error. And I do believe it's a safety issue.
Explain how it's a safety issue.
Because it's, the closer you get to the adjacent property, the more likelihood there is of, of a child wandering onto that property, even if it's fenced. Suppose there's a, a railing or a, a block wall fence, a child can climb- or a, a block wall fence a child can climb up on and get right over the fence. I mean, they're, you know, kids. I mean, we've all got them. We've got grandkids and they'll get in anywhere. And so the further away you, you put it, the better. And I just, again, as Chuck said, what is the tolerance? If you say, well, five feet, we can allow a variance less than five feet, what is it? Is it four feet, 10 inches? Is it four feet, nine inches? And if, if it's that much of a small tolerance, then surely there's a way to redesign the, the pool to take care of that. I think, in most cases, I would agree with you, but in this particular case, when you have child safety at stake, I, I think you, you need to have a code and you need to stick with it. So that's my opinion. And just, and we'll put it to bed in terms of the, the land use on the alcohol, on the plan development overlay. I think if we approve this on a specific project, we've taken a certain amount of control out of our hands as to what we allow. Yes, it still has to come forward, and yes, it can still be subject to a CEQA review, but it's a whole lot different when a property owner asks for something that now by right he's entitled to if we approve this, as opposed to the full scrutiny that the project would get when it came before us. And, and for me, I think for most of us or all of us, that's what we, we want to do when it comes to alcohol. Not that we don't want to approve it, but we want to be able to scrutinize it. We want our staff, our citizens, to be able to scrutinize it and address the issue if they'd like to. So this gives us the ability to do that if we remove that from the code. So I'd be in favor of that.
Mr. Roberts, I think I know what you're going to talk about. Go ahead.
You do?
I'm, let's see.
I might surprise you. It, it appears that every time we have municipal code amendments and, you know, in my twenty, 21-plus years on the city council, there's been quite a few. And in the past, when you get so many different changes, and it's very hard to understand because you're going from catteries to e-cigarettes and, and everything else, it almost seems like the planner that, that is writing this staff report should meet with all of us ahead of time and explain to us just what they're talking about. Because some of this stuff, I, I've seen before, but others, this is the first time I've ever seen it. And it doesn't specifically say why. It's just there. You have to accept it. And in some cases, maybe I don't want to accept it. So I'm hoping, and the city manager is listening, that from now on, if we have something like this that is very complicated, give us a chance to meet with staff. Okay? That's all.
All right. Well, we are all over the place, gentlemen. Mr. Nigard?
I'll make a motion. It's probably not going to be seconded, but let me do it. Okay? So I'll make a motion. We approve staff recommendation, remove the Temecula Creek Village overlay, and remove the pool setback issue. That's my motion.
Second.
Oh, you got one. Okay, and the setback issue. Okay, so if we remove the Temecula Creek overlay, if we remove the setback issue, where does that leave us? Where does that leave us?
That, that means that, that while there is a, if I understand correctly, and Peter could verify this, it means that a, a minor exception can be considered. It's not outright shut down. And of course, if there's a safety issue, staff will say, that's a safety issue. But that's what variances are all about. I don't want to remake the argument, but that's the whole idea behind a variance.
All right. So I have a motion and a second to remove the DCI overlay and the setback issue.
Madam Mayor, before I read that, let me just clarify that the pool setback requirement would be section 14 of the ordinance, and under this motion, that would be deleted. And the Temecula Creek Village item is section 18 of the ordinance, and that would be deleted by this motion.
Okay.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just, just for clarity, it, it, it allows for the ability to have a variance, but it doesn't, it doesn't grant anything, correct?
Right. The proposed, section 14 says no exception can be made. So by deleting it from the proposed ordinance, the code on that issue remains as it is, which would permit a variance.
Okay, got it.
All right. So then you heard the motion and the clarification, so.
I need to read the title.
All right. So go ahead, Peter.
This would be an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula, amending portions of Title 16, Title 8, Title 16, and Title 17 of the Temecula municipal code, making minor changes and clarifications and correcting typographical errors regarding, one, the definition of a cattery, two, the definition of smoking to include e-cigarettes, three, allowing certain uses among various zoning districts, four, revising procedures for zoning appeals, revising procedures for extensions of time for tentative maps, four, descriptions of, descriptions for residential districts, five, agricultural uses within residential districts, six has been deleted, the plan development overlay, seven is bicycle parking requirements, eight, standards for permanent wall sign, and nine has been deleted, clarifying setbacks for swimming pools and spas, 10, making other minor clarifications and typographical corrections to the Temecula municipal code, and 11, determining that the ordinance is exempt from further environmental review under section 15061B3 of the CEQA guidelines.
Thank you. Before we have the vote, I have one more comment for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a lot of stuff covered in this ordinance. And unfortunately, because of the pool item that's been removed via the motion and second, I will have to vote no. But I just wanted to make that comment about why my no vote will appear on the board.
All right. Everybody clear? Okay. Then cast your votes. And we have two yeses and three noes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Comacher.
I'd like to move staff recommendation on item nine in the same way it was just proposed, only with the item on the pool setbacks remaining in, but the item on the development overlay and alcohol removed.
All right. So.
I'll, I'll second that.
We've got a removal of section 14, and section 18 remains as proposed by staff, correct?
I think it's the other way around.
Was it? Did I have my numbers backwards? Okay. So pool stays, is, is removed and?
No, pool is in.
Pool is in. That's right, because it sets the condition.
And PDL is taken out.
And the PDL is taken out.
Right.
All right. So are we going to reset? Are we going to do a voice vote?
I, I, I don't need to read, I don't need to read the entire thing again, fortunately, but I will state that section nine and the title, which is clarifying setbacks for swimming pools and spas, would remain under Councilmember Comacher's motion.
Okay.
And my second.
And, and Chuck's second.
And the second.
All right. Then in that case, it looks like if we can't reset, we're going to do a voice vote? Which we can do. So you have a motion and a second. Or we can do a roll call. There you go. So have a motion. Who made the motion? Jeff and Chuck made the second, so all in favor? And it passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Moving on to item 10, municipal code amendment to chapter 12.08 regulating taxi cab services with the city of Temecula, long-range planning project number LR13-0011. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Edwards and members of the city council. Again, this project involves consideration of two items for you. One is a resolution, and the other is an ordinance to amend the existing taxi cab ordinance. And at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Dale West to review this project with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. Good evening again, council. Okay. Okay. Start, beginning this, I, around the summer, we started receiving some complaints and concerns about operations of taxi cabs within the city. Our taxi cab ordinance was adopted back in 1994 as an urgency ordinance by the city council. At that time, the city was only issuing business license, then learned that a municipal ordinance regulating taxi cab services required for the public, by the California Public Utilities Commission. Thus, that's what resulted in the urgency ordinance. Again, this, this summer, we've heard a lot of concerns and complaints about some of the operations going on, taxi cab ordinance. So it's time to look to, to amend and update our, our code. We are proposing amendments to the following areas of chapter 12.08. We're amending the insurance requirement for an operator permit, adding requirements to affix a taxi permit to a permitted vehicle, adding mandatory controlled substance testing for a driver's permit, adding the requirement to permanently affix the company name and top light switch taxi cab, and revising the administrative enforcement and penalties provisions. For an operator permit, to, or to obtain an operator permit, an operator must obtain a business license with the city of Temecula, provide proof of insurance, provide a list of all authorized drivers, I'm sorry, provide a list of all drivers authorized to operate a taxi cab, provide a list of all the vehicles to be used in service in the city of Temecula, and maintain a vehicle maintenance log for each one of those vehicles listed on the operator's permit. The maintenance log is to be signed and dated by the mechanic after each of the maintenance appointments that they have. An operator permit also expires one year from the date that it's issued, at which time an operator must apply for a new operator's permit and go through the same steps and provide the same information as listed up on the screen here. The proposed amendment for obtaining an operator's permit involves an increase in the general liability, automotive liability, and workers' compensation insurance coverage limits from 750,000, which is what we currently require, to 1 million per occurrence. This is consistent with current city policy, and the insurance requirement will be established through resolution by city council, which is also part of the staff report. To obtain a taxi permit, an operator must provide a signed dated statement of copy of the invoice from a licensed mechanic who inspected the vehicle, certifying the vehicle and its safety systems are in safe operating condition. The vehicle inspections include such things as ensuring that the fire extinguisher is onboard, the motors, tires, brakes, safety restraints, upholstery, and upholstery are in general, is generally clean. To issue a taxi permit, the operator brings in the vehicles or vehicles, if they have multiple ones. This is, the inspection is done by the police department, and then they issue an actual sticker, which is the taxi permit, and they fix that to the vehicle. They expire one year after the date of issuance, in which they have to go through this process on an annual basis. The proposed amendment adds this process to our municipal code. It's done in practice, but it's, has not been, but it's now added to the code. To obtain a driver permit, a driver must be 18 years of age. They must provide the name of the registered owner of the taxi cab. They must provide a copy of the operator's permit. They must undergo a criminal background check and complete the city's mandatory controlled substance alcohol testing certification program. Like the other two permits, a driver's permit expires on an annual basis from the date that it was issued, and they must obtain a new driver's permit every year. The proposed amendment to this is adding the mandatory controlled substance and alcohol testing certification program, which is consistent with government code, California government code, section 53075.5. Information display and top lights. Each taxi cab is required to display an exterior sign that identifies the taxi cab company and, and have an assigned vehicle number posted on the vehicle. They are also required to have an information card that has the photo of the driver, that identifies the driver's name, operator's name, business telephone number, business address, and rates, including any surcharges. Top lights for, are required to be affixed to the taxi cab and shall be connected to the taxi meter so that the top light clearly indicates when taxi meter is in operation. And this proposed amendment requires that the exterior signage and top lights be permanently affixed to the vehicle. Currently, police officers are the only authorized personnel to do inspections and to enforce this chapter. The proposed amendment adds code enforcement officers as authorized personnel, and it also updates the administrative enforcement and penalties by establishing that violations to chapter 12.08 may be enforced pursuant to the enforcement provisions set forth in title one of the Temecula municipal code and are considered infractions. This item is also being proposed as an exemption per, so in section 150163, I'm sorry, 1501, 15061B3 of CEQA, which is a general rule CEQA that allows a jurisdiction to determine that the project is exempt if the jurisdiction can determine with certainty that there's no possibility the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. There are two recommendations before you tonight. One is to adopt a resolution establishing the insurance requirement for taxi cab operators, and the second one is to adopt the ordinance presented by staff amending in its entirety, chapter 12.08 of the Temecula municipal code. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Dale. Councilmember or Mayor Protim Comacher.
Yeah, just a quick one. When you talked about the annual inspections of the vehicles, I believe you said that the police department and code enforcement will be authorized to conduct those inspections?
Correct.
Normally, when we look at code enforcement, we look at a wide range of talents and things that they look at. When we're talking about inspecting a vehicle for safety concerns, brakes, steering, are we to assume that code enforcement officers are qualified to do that?
No, let, let me clarify. What I, what I meant to say was that vehicle inspection has to be done by a certified mechanic. They have to provide certification signed by the mechanic that the safety features of the vehicle are in compliance.
Okay. So the code enforcement officer oversees the process but doesn't perform the inspection?
Correct.
Okay, I'm fine.
Okay.
Mr. Nigard's next. I'll go after him.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know when we, we met and you presented this ordinance before bringing it, we talked a little bit about advertising. And I'm wondering, have we given any consideration to, certainly taxi cabs like to advertise, buses like to advertise on their sides, et cetera. Some taxi cabs are now taking to putting things on top of their roof. Certainly, I don't know how the council feels. I don't necessarily have heartburn with that. But have we considered how big that can be? Is there a limit? Is there, is there a vehicle code limit in that regard? Could it take up the whole roof? Could it be an A-frame on the whole roof? Could it be a portion of the roof? Have we looked into any of that?
No, we have not. I can't speak to the vehicle code, but this, this chapter dealing with regulating taxi cabs does not regulate signage, so it's silent to that. Doesn't allow or disallow it.
Great. Thank you.
Dale, sort of relevant to Mr. Comacher's question, are we designing the checklist that the applicant goes to the? that the applicant goes to the authorized mechanic to make sure that there are a list of items that are being checked, or is it up to the discretion of that private entity to decide? It seems like there should be some consistency as to wherever they're going, that a certain number of safety features are being checked.
Right. I don't know if there's an existing checklist. I know the PD already, this is already required in our code.
Okay.
I don't know if we have someone from PD here that might be able to respond to that question, but they...
Dale, we have Chief Kubel here in the background. I don't know, Chief, if you want to address that, I would assume that there's a standardization process.
He wasn't running towards the mic as if he was on a full court press.
And he's called in reinforcements.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The question was, in the interest of consistency, when the taxi cab applicant needs to get their vehicle certified or recertified, they go to someone who has the qualifications to determine if the vehicle is qualified, but is there a consistent checklist to ensure that everybody is checking the same items before they say that the vehicle is certified?
If you're talking about the mechanic certificate that they bring us, I'm not sure. They just need to bring us, my understanding is, proof from a mechanic that the vehicle meets the basic safety guidelines that's required, but as far as the paperwork that we at the PD require, there is set paperwork that we need from them, their business license, the certificate from the mechanic, the proof of their insurance. We need those things, and we check those things off before we issue the permit. So internally, we have a set thing that we're asking for, but I'm not sure if each mechanic...
So maybe what I might propose, the consideration to be given to, is that I don't think it would be very difficult for us to create a list of safety items that when the applicant needs to apply for their permit, we hand that to them, so that when they need to certify the vehicle, they can just take that into the mechanic. We get somebody's signature and stamp at the bottom of the form that we've provided them, and then regardless where they go, everybody's checking the same thing.
It very well may be that way, I'm just not, I'm not aware.
Okay.
I don't know. I can check.
I'm proposing that maybe we do that.
We can absolutely do that.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, the ordinance clearly provides that the city manager has the authority to require those types of certifications.
I'm not questioning, Peter, that we, I have the authority, I just want to make sure that...
You do it.
Well, yeah, that we just don't get a handwritten note, and some mechanic says, "Yeah, it's safe." Well, what does that mean? I think our PD can probably define in conjunction with staff or hire a mechanic to tell us what they think needs to be checked, then we create that form, so that everybody's getting the same thing checked, regardless of where they go to get it checked.
No, we understand, we can absolutely pursue that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? No? Then could we have our speakers, please? See that we have a couple in queue.
Lyle Wells.
Okay. All right, so we're going to open the public hearing. Are you awake, Mr. Roberts?
No, but I...
You are now. Mr. Wells, hi.
How are you? My name's Lyle. I'm co-owner with my wife with Black's Taxi of Temecula. There is a checklist for every car. I read the proposed ordinance a few times. I agree with everything in detail, except for the raise in insurance. We carry $750,000 now, and going to a million. This is an email from Catherine Haley from American Business Insurance. She insures, I would say, over 60% of the cabs, she's the broker for a large majority of cabs here in the city. It says the city increasing limits would only add to the uninsured expired and unbusinesslike companies that will appear, because it will drive the cost even higher. She's saying that you know that we in Temecula carry higher taxi insurance limits than LA, Minneapolis, and Florida, which are the three top insurance, three of the most expensive in the country to insure in. I also have a question as far as, when you increase insurance, you can start pushing out good companies, just for cost. And when you do that, you leave a gap in the, in the market, and that can bring in Uber, Lyft, Sidecar. And when you bring those companies in, there's no background, there's no mechanical inspection, there's no live scan, minimal control. And the bottom of this email, she actually states that if you see the cars with the pink mustaches, stay out of their way, because if you get to an accident with one of them, their insurance isn't any good, and we'd have to be covered with uninsured motorists if you, if that entity came into the city's cab market. Which is, when you're going into like San Diego, LA, they're already complaining about these guys. There's lawsuits in San Francisco concerning the exact same issue right now, where somebody was hit. And Uber won't cover because they were waiting for their fare to come back in the car, and the cab was circling for a parking spot and hit four pedestrians. So that's a big thing. I think going the exact opposite way with the insurance would encompass the cabs we already have here, help them grow. It's all about profit, and profit and service, I should say. So, I mean, you keep the cabs you have, keep them operating, watch your cabs better condition, newer vehicles, looks better in the city, you know, signage, better companies advertising on top of those cabs. Another thing, aside from the money, the top lights. And here it gives reference to color scheme, make 12, where's that? 1208040, 040. It says in the back, second page here, any color scheme, monogram, name, insignia used by another person or entity operating within an operator permit within the city limits, such as manner to be misleading to, or which would intend to deceive or defraud the public. Can we add top lights to that? A lot of cabs use very similar top lights, but the font, the design on the top light is specific to that company. My company uses a LED oval shape, which I've come to Mrs. Smith before concerning it, she can't do much, her hands are tied. My customers are seeing that top light and jumping in those cabs, and that's not my cab company. I've actually got complaints about my cab company picking people up, and it wasn't me, because they thought, and it's different color cars, silver cars, but it's the same top light. There were two companies that did it. One's already taken their top light off, the other one's still operating with the same top light in town. And one of my applications, it says, it's trademark insignia, and it says, Z-Moto Top Light, and it's signed off on, and that's what that top light is, it's a Z-Moto Top Next, as far as enforcing a lot of these rules and regulations, it's, I would like to see the fine print as far as how, just because a lot of these companies are home-based, and some of the requirements in here, I'm not home-based, by the way, so I'm just, I was at one time, but speaking on behalf of one of the guys...
Mr. Wells, you have about 10 seconds.
10 seconds?
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, you addressed the things, Uber, Sidecar, you don't want that coming in here. That's, LA's already having problems, they can't get them out.
Yes, Mayor Protem Comerchero has a question.
Mr. Wells, thank you for being here, for one thing. Concerning the insurance issue and the proposed increase from $750,000 to $1 million, I don't know if it was in the letter that you put up, because it was kind of fuzzy and it was hard for me to see, but can you tell us what the difference in an annual premium is for you per car to go from $750,000 to $1 million?
I haven't, I was emailing back and forth with her today from American Business Insurance, Catherine Haley, and I asked her roughly, you know, what's it look like? And she says annually, it's probably $200,000 to $300,000 per cab. But you have your one cab, you know, you can, $200,000, $300,000, you can dig that up over the course of a year. But when you have companies like, I know Red Top is represented here, they have, they're a larger company, Yellow Cab, that adds up annually. And you, we also, you know, carry general liability for our company itself, so I have four cabs, I pay annually, it's over $22,000 annually for four cars, and I'm adding a fifth, just purchased it before I came here. And so that adds up, you know?
So, I mean, if I want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, so if you paid $22,000 for four, roughly $5,500 per car, and we'd be adding roughly $250 per car?
Yeah, that was a guess, that wasn't like...
About 5%, give or take.
Yeah.
Rough numbers.
And that was a guess, as far as her, she didn't do any background, she didn't call the insurance companies. And she was actually saying that lowering it would actually include other insurance companies that she can't bring into the city to insure cabs, because they don't insure to the limits that the city requires. I picked up a Marietta license requirements and whatnot, and they're, I think they're $500,000, I believe, for the exact same thing. Their licensing's a little different there, but it's, their insurance is, I think, 500. They don't allow home-based cabs, whereas Temecula does.
Thank you.
No?
Thank you.
No? Okay, next speaker, please.
Carl Nielsen.
Mr. Nielsen, good evening.
Good evening. I am with Red Top City Cab, as you may or may not know, I've seen many of you before. In regards, number one, I just want to briefly say, in regards to your question about the certificate for the requirements of the safety of a vehicle, it is set in stone, the copies are maintained by the police department of Temecula and Marietta Police Department, they are identical. They also require a mechanic be certified by the state. It's not just a backyard mechanic. It's a very thorough inspection, and it is in stone, so that's not really an issue. The couple, I just have a couple things. Number, regarding the insurance, that's kind of a cost of doing business, okay? Yeah, we have more cabs than anybody in the city, but you know what? If you gotta spend $200, you gotta spend it, okay? We have the lowest fare structure, and we're still able to do it. So I really, you know, I sympathize in one respect, but I think the proposal is not inconsiderate or unwanted. I think it's probably a needed, needed thing. I haven't seen any real need for a million dollars, I don't know, but I mean, yes, I could understand the city wanting to have it, and I don't have an objection with it, and I don't think anybody in our company does. The other thing is, the, you brought up something about the advertising of signs on top of the cabs. We have a couple of those, and they are standard throughout the industry. I'm not saying that somebody might come up with something that's a little bit different, but as far as length is concerned, they vary, as far as height, they don't vary. They're a particular height for a minivan and a particular height for a car. That's pretty well standard in the industry. The other thing is, I'm, they brought up in here about having taxi stands. Taxi stands, as far as I'm concerned, they're saying they limit three cabs to a taxi stand. We don't have taxi stands in Temecula. Are we saying we're going to have taxi stands in Temecula? If we are, I think the only place that you would need them would be in Temecula, and I think three cars per stand would be excessive in, in Old Town, because, hey, there's parking as limited as it is. And to put three, take three parking spaces for cabs that may not be there all day long, doesn't make sense to me. I would like to see that reduced to no more than two, and one wouldn't even be ideal. I just don't like to see spaces taken away from the public for taxis. The last thing I wanted to bring up was, and I gotta find it here, you'll have to excuse the old man, signs within the cab, as of this time, I haven't seen a requirement that requires the photograph of a driver be put inside the cab. I'm not objecting to it, I just, it's in here, and I just thought, hey, if you want to do it, fine. But as of this time, I haven't seen it, so that's kind of a new addition, which I don't have any problem with. I took up the fact of, last thing, drug testing. You proposed that each person, when they apply for a new license, be, have to take a drug test. I would rather see the city of Temecula do like other cities have done, and say, you have to take a drug test when you apply for your license, however, you must sign up to a consortium for random testing. I want to see the driver not know when he has to take that test. I want to see the driver be subject to a test at any time of the year. And it's done in many, many, many places, in different, for example, California PUC. It's just a random test. You may be part of a consortium of, let's just say, 25 drivers. You may or may not get called every quarter. You may never get called for that year, strictly random. And they make the decision, the drug testing people make the decision, nobody else has any input. That's what I would like to see the city do. One time where I can plan, oh, I got three months before I get my license, I guess I'd better behave myself for a couple months. I don't like that. If you're gonna make it realistic, let's make it realistic, but say, hey, you abide by, I mean, what the heck? We're worried about one inch on a swimming pool, what the hell more dangerous thing you can have is a taxi cab driving around under the influence? Be crazy, absolutely crazy, drugs or alcohol. So I want to see that the, each driver has to conform, period. Not be able to plan or anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you very much.
All right, and we have no further speakers?
No, we do not.
No? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing. There, Mr. Roberts, that's a gentle tap for you. And Mr. Nigar.
Just commenting on what the speaker said regarding the drug testing, it's an interesting notion, and I like it. I'm not certain how the city could do that. How do you, do you, how do you notify a driver on the spur of the moment you have to come in for a drug?
The consortium does that.
The third party.
Uh-huh. And they handle what scheduling?
I'd like to hear more about that. That'd be, because it is true, if you know that you gotta get drug tested every three months, you know, you, you make sure that you're clean the last month if you're doing drugs, you know? But I know, I'd like to hear more about that, if you guys know anything more about that, that's interesting.
Well, I know there are some, if I, Peter, if you could weigh in, maybe this is no notice for you, but I know that there are some restrictions on demanding random drug tests in some industries. Do you know anything about that?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I noted that in one of the sections of the proposed ordinance discussing the mandatory controlled substance and alcohol testing is a provision that comes out of the state code, providing for a consortium to enter in, and the driver has a list of that. What I would recommend, if you are interested in doing that, is we can find out exactly what we need to do to implement that, and we can either administratively require it under the city manager's authority, or bring it back for the council to add that to the ordinance. To be quite honest with you, I don't know what all the ramifications are of that, how that consortium would work, or, I think the police department would want to weigh in as to what, what the process would be for requiring that.
All right.
So that'd be something I think that I'd be willing to look at, because I think that it's effective, and it speaks to safety. The other issue about advertising, you know what, it's just something I think we keep an eye on. You know what, it's pretty industry standard, forgot out of hand, we could probably address it. So I don't have any heartburn there either.
All right. Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments were going to be similar to, at least, a part of what Mr. Comerch, or Mr. Nigar was talking about. I have some firsthand experience as a result of my active duty time in the Navy, which began in 1981, and went to 89, well, 87 active duty, and then the last 25 years as an airline pilot at Delta Airlines. And I like the suggestion, and I think it could be implemented. I like that Peter weighed in and suggested that we look into how we implement that. When I went to work for Delta Airlines, there was not a requirement for airlines to do mandatory drug testing, but that occurred soon after that. And initially, interestingly enough, the requirement for checking was greater than it currently is, but after a significant period of time where there were almost no positive results, the requirement... positive results, the requirement went down to reflect more, uh, alignment with, um, the need. And I think that in the industry, the taxi cab industry, you might find the same thing. That initially, uh, there may be some folks that are gonna push the, the limit, but once they, uh, find out that their job and livelihood depend on them, um, providing, um, you know, a dr, uh, influence-free, uh, service to their employer, that you either weed out the folks that can't make that, you know, that disciplined call to not abuse, um, or, uh, they'll end up getting t- testing positive and, and losing their job, or they'll clean their act up. Uh, and then when you start seeing that there are very few, uh, positive test results, the requirement for a certain number of testings on a, within a timeframe may go down, um, and may still serve the community with the need, I think, that we're interested in gaining here. So, that's been my own personal experience, and I think it's had a very positive effect on, uh, public transportation in the industry I've worked in, and I don't, I don't know that this is any different. We've had recent news stories of train conductors being found to be, uh, operating under the abuse of, uh, either drugs or alcohol. Um, and there just isn't any, any circumstance where that's, should be acceptable. Anyone that takes, um, uh, someone else's life into their hands has to be held accountable. So, I would support looking into that.
Right. Mayor Potem Comachero.
Thank you. Uh, first, I, I concur with, uh, both of my colleagues in that regarding, uh, anything we can do to make sure that people aren't impaired when they're on the road, uh, driving others especially, uh, we should be doing. Uh, but I wanted to address the, um, the insurance question for a moment. We had, interestingly, representatives from two cab companies with, uh, a little bit differing points of view. But, um, when you look at just the sheer math of it all, we set the $750,000 limit in 1994 when we originally passed the, uh, the ordinance, and now here we are 20 years later, and we're talking about something akin to a five percent increase in cost for insurance, whether that's an accurate number, whether it's three percent or eight percent or nine percent, uh, it's still a relatively small amount when you compare it to what's happened in inflation over the last 20 years. And why that becomes important is not so much the size of the premium, and certainly, uh, none of us like to impose additional costs on private industry, but what does it cost today to mitigate the effects of the incidents for which that insurance is insuring the city? And if you have an incident that in nineteen ninety-four resulted in an award of $750,000 and it was covered by insurance, that same award today would probably be closer to $2 million, uh, three times as much or even, uh, not quite that. So, uh, I think in order to protect the city and protect our citizens' treasury, um, it's a relatively small price to pay, a very small increase comparatively speaking, in 20 years. I mean, if you look at an average inflation rate of three percent a year over 20 years compounded, uh, you pretty much have a doubling at least, uh, at the very least. So, um, so I think that's an appropriate amount, and I, I wouldn't look to reduce that.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. Um, the company that I work for, or the organization that I work for, ensures 16 full-size buses and high-density passenger vans, and that's really the industry standard. I mean, it's a, a million dollars minimum, and almost everything else that we do requires a million dollars of coverage, so I think that's fairly standard across the board. And some things that we do require more than that, and my insurance agent's sitting in the audience, so I see him nodding his head. Um, so, Mr. Roberts, do you want to weigh in? Are you good?
I'm good.
All right. And if we have no further questions, oh, Jeff?
Oh, I was just gonna, uh, propose a motion. Uh, I move we accept the, uh, changes or the additions to the municipal code when it comes to taxi cabs with the inclusion of the random, uh, drug testing as proposed by the speaker and discussed here, uh, under the discretion of the city manager, once all that information is in, to determine whether or not that is, one, feasible, two, practical, and three, advisable. And if it meets, uh, those criteria, then I say just go ahead and, and add it in at your discretion.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Um, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Peter?
Uh, two things. One, um, does that include the staff recommendation for the approval of the insurance resolution, which was separate from the ordinance?
My motion does.
Okay.
And my second does.
And then I'll just quickly read the title here. Fortunately, it's a short one. "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, Mending in Its Entirety Chapter 12.08 of the Temecula Municipal Code Relating to Taxi Cabs."
All right. So we have a motion and a second, and you may cast your votes, please. And it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, on to item number 11. Approval of Levying an Assessment Against Lodging Businesses Within the Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District, TBT BID for fiscal year 2014 and 15. And we have Christine Damco.
Madam Mayor, before the staff report...
Angela.
Uh, due to my wife's employment with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, while I'm not a decision-maker in voting on this item, I am going to recuse myself from the dais.
All right. Mr. Adams, you're excused.
He, he has to come back, though, right?
Yeah, we still have, you know, city manager's report, maybe.
Yeah. Maybe that's why he put it at the end of the agenda.
Uh-huh, maybe. All right. Christine, good evening.
Good evening.
Peter?
Oh, uh, Chuck, were you, uh, didn't, didn't, weren't you going to recuse yourself on this one, too? I, I believe your, your company sells merchandise to the Temecula Convention and Visitors Bureau as well. Didn't you put that into any mail?
That I'm aware of, no.
Oh, okay. Then I, I apologize. I, 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 I thought that was an issue.
It might be the balloon and wine.
Balloon and Wine Festival.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Not that I should talk about that.
My, my apologies.
Just watching out for you, Mr. Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Christine Damco, Economic Development Analyst here at the city, and tonight I have the pleasure of presenting the Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District, or what we call the bid, uh, levy and a, levy of an assessment. Just a quick background, uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Temecula Lodging Businesses back in 2005 formed this bid, and the purpose really is to promote Temecula as a destination and, um, all in turn to increase, uh, night, room night stays and to really benefit our, uh, Temecula hotel lodging establishments. Currently, there are 15 lodging establishments within the city of Temecula. The annual levy represents four percent of roommates collected. This is not a tax on Temecula citizens. Uh, this is a levy on people, guests, um, who stay in our hotels. Um, the hotel, hoteliers have all agreed, um, they've even signed a petition in support of being this added four percent levy, uh, on themselves. And, um, so again, this is not a tax on the citizens. And currently, there are no protests to date against this levy. With that being said, staff recommends, uh, approving the resolution for the levy of this, uh, fiscal year 1415 in connection with the bid. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Comachero, you have a question?
Really quick, and I just want to make sure that, that we and the public hear this correctly. So I'm gonna attempt to paraphrase what you said. Tell me if it's correct.
Sure.
This is an assessment on visitors to our city. The assessment is paid by the hotel owners, and they have asked us unanimously to agree to this assessment.
Right. They are asking us to...
Okay. Unanimously?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's, I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
All right. Uh, any other questions? No one? Uh, okay. So... Right? We're done with you. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Okay. So then I'm gonna open the public hearing. And do we have any requests to speak?
There are no requests to speak.
All right. So we'll wait one second, going once, going twice. Any requests? No? All right. We will close the public hearing and entertain discussion, council members.
Move, move, uh, staff recommendation.
Okay. Peter?
Just need one quick thing, and that is to have the city clerk confirm no protests were filed. Christine said that, but they have to be filed with the city clerk.
All right. Did we have any protests?
No, we did not.
All right. Thank you. And I have a motion.
Now I'll move staff recommendation.
And I need a second. Anyone? Second?
Mr. Nigard, have you had a second tonight at all?
We're waiting.
No. You know what? I've been trying to trim down on my seconds.
Would you push the button?
It's showing. They're looking good.
All right. I don't know who's seconded, but somebody did, thank God. Okay, so, all in favor, and then go ahead and cast your votes. And it's unanimous, finally. All right. Mr. City Manager, here he comes, just in time. Big report.
Um, only one thing tonight. Madam Mayor, um, wanted to introduce to the community our new Public Works Director, Thomas Garcia, and, uh, just welcome him to the team. Uh, we're happy to have, uh, the vacancy filled, and I'd also, uh, like to commend Amir Atar, uh, as the acting, uh, Public Works Director. He served the city very, very well in that capacity, and our, our hats off to Amir, and we welcome Tom to the executive management team.
Thank you, Amir. Would you like to say anything briefly?
Very briefly. Thank you. Uh, I'm very excited to be part of the city, and I'm looking forward to many years of